All right, I would like to call the Chappaqua Library Board of Trustees November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting to order at seven oh four P M. Welcome, everybody. Welcome guests. Uh, we are now going to stand for the pledge. One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which stands the nation, for liberty and justice. Hi, Joe.
Welcome.
Everyone.
Thank you for joining. All right, um, we have some, we have board administration on the agenda, but I do want to say welcome to Bob Conrad, our new director. We're very happy to have you with us tonight, and we will let you give a report and a little bit of an update about yourself in a little while, your director's report. Um, so board, board administration, um, we have posted some minutes from some special meetings that had not, the minutes had not been previously accepted. Uh, so for the minutes of August twenty-ninth and September second, I think this board is prepared to accept those two correct. Hmm, okay, so those who are getting accepted, the minutes from the eighteenth, we're going to bring back next month, uh, we still have some edits we're making. And then we have the business of authorized signatories. So as we all know, um, it, the, the, you have to get onto the bank paperwork to be able to sign the checks for the library. So this is the authorized signatory to, uh, to get our new director, Mr. Conrad, onto the bank, uh, for signing privileges, um, and that, that is in here somewhere. I'm too far back, I think. Yes, here we go. Um, so I'll, I'll make the, the resolution and then someone can second it, but, um, we're making a motion for the resolution for authorized signatories for the following bank accounts, whereas the Chappaqua Central School District Public Library Board of Trustees have a fiduciary life, fiduciary responsibility for all library funds, whereas the library has chosen Valley Bank to provide banking services, be it resolved that the Chappaqua Central Public Library Board of Trustees has approved the following, the Valley Bank checking and money market accounts, add authorized signatories effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Robert Conrad. So this resolution will be approved and adopted on this day, if I can have someone second it. Jen, they seconding all in favor. Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, so, um, this sets off a process that our staff assistant will take care of on your behalf, it'll add you as a signatory, and then, um, you'll be able to help with the, with the checks, which will be a tremendous benefit to our team. Um, okay, president's report, so, uh, we had a very successful interim director who kept things running, uh, and we now have Bob Conrad, and, uh, as far as my report this evening, I wanted to take the time to highlight the art exhibit in the gallery, Larry D'Amico, uh, has set up the, the exhibit back here, and if you haven't come down to see it, you should, I've been, I think like four or five times already, um, it's just that interesting and engaging, so, uh, it's very rare that you actually get to kind of peer into an artist's, uh, studio, or their, or even like their brain, and I feel like this exhibit gets you as close as you're ever going to get to that. Um, the artists have very generously, uh, given their sketchbooks for this exhibit, and you are actually encouraged to open the sketchbook and look through it, so it's, uh, it's a, it's a tremendous opportunity. Um, I don't actually know how many artists off the top of my head, but it's quite a large number of artists, in, including some that are more well-known than others, Linda Cunningham has her own space in the Bronx, she happened to have been a professor of mine at Franklin Marshall, uh, so this is a very cool exhibit, and I highly recommend it. Uh, if you haven't seen it again, it, you should take some time for it, uh, or, or popping quick a bunch of times, because it's, it's, it's a lot. Um, so that's really what I wanted to highlight, and then I wanted to talk a little bit with my board, um, and our new director, I know we are, uh, as much as Bob is joining us new, we're new to each other, and so as we work through that, I think, um, I really want to thank everybody for their patience, because I know it's not always easy. Um, and, uh, I know today we were talking about minutes, and that's always like, nobody wants to talk about the minutes, but every piece of work that we do benefits everything else we do, and I appreciate that everyone has such attention to detail and, um, brings their best selves to this table, so thank you. Um, and then in terms of our board, I wanted to solicit some feedback, I was thinking, um, I owe you guys a training, so every year, you know, New York State now has it as a regulation, but our board adopted it, um, earlier, and so the president typically proposes a training, and then we kind of see what we want to do, um, and I actually thought for this board, what might be a good starting point would be, uh, for us to talk about how we manage our director with Bob, and to have that facilitated, um, so how the management team works together, how we work together, and how we're our, our best management selves for the staff and for the public. So my, but my thinking was that, you know, the, our lawyers are, they're very, they have a lot of depth of expertise, and that's something that they are very comfortable delivering, so we would have a source, you know, they would do like an hour with us, and then we would have additional time, um, after they depart, but I thought that might be like a nice, kind of easy training that I can get us, that would probably have a lot of, um, benefits, but I didn't know if anybody had any other, um, thoughts or suggestions, or if you guys, you know, feel like this is a good territory.
I'd like to turn it around and ask Bob what he would like from us, and, and work that way.
Well, um, I'm, I'm actually inclined to have the attorneys meet with us as a board, and that could absolutely be an, an effective use of their hour and yours to, uh, review the legal structure of the library and the role of the board. Um, an alternative to bringing the lawyers in, although one of the reasons I accepted this position is I was looking forward to working with competent legal counsel, we always had, uh, family attorneys as, as the library appointed attorney, so all of the library problems were outside of their bailiwick, but I'm looking forward to working with your attorneys. Another option note is to have the exact same content, uh, reviewed by either somebody at W L S, the Westchester Library System, or somebody, a consultant that they might refer, I know that Jerry, um, uh, Jerry, I can never remember his last name.
No, Jerry, uh, Jerry, he wrote the manual for New York State. But he did deliver a training to this lawyer.
Jerry's very effective at that kind of board training, as is Rebecca Smith Albridge, and they both do this kind of.
Jerry Nichols.
Jerry Nichols.
There we go.
That's the one.
How could we forget?
Man on the cover of the book. So those are, those are alternatives, but I think it's a lovely subject, a perfectly germane subject, and if the question was really from Brian, is that, what would I recommend, um, I'd say, I'd say that's, uh, at least a starting point, is a review of the board's duty and obligations, ways that they can be structured and best utilized.
Yeah, now, this is, I'm thinking this, because you don't want to, you don't want to wait till you have a problem, so I figure this would be a good way to start in a healthy relationship, um, and then, and it's also something that we can accomplish easily and quickly, and then, then we, once Bob's here a little while, he can tell us where he thinks we could play best, and then for the twenty twenty-three training, whatever that, you know, that might be informed more by what need from us, but I think, um, is there any other comments from this side of the table? All a good idea. You're good. All right, excellent. All right, then I'm going to.
Yeah, that would be, it would go, it would go on.
You mentioned New York State, Liz, I was trying to say, the New York State will two hours of trustee training, is that counting towards the two, or?
Yeah, so this will cover off on our requirement, for sure, um, because I imagine that we will definitely be there after the hour, um, with the attorneys, so this will meet that requirement, but generally speaking, I expect every trustee to independently meet the requirement, they, doing the trainings that are most interesting and engaging to you, be that a content-based training that you're taking, that's something library-related that's interesting to you, that counts too, because it's relevant, and the more you're a part of this world, the more you know, the better you are at helping it. Um, but generally, the trainings that, I take a lot of video, I know you, like, everyone here has taken some training online, so you, that all, just keep track of the hours, I'm not sure, um, we'll have to check, I can get back to you on, um, what the, how we have to track it, or you know.
Yeah, no, so, yeah. So I can speak to that.
Thank you.
Okay, so would you like me to speak about that now, or wait till the update on policies?
Um, so what, what's your preference?
I have none.
Okay, then we'll wait till we get to policy, so we'll, we'll continue this conversation under policy, and I know you have a lot of information, I've done a lot of work there, so thank you, well, that's great, um, and then, so now we'll go into, we're gonna, we're gonna yield the floor to Bob and, and have a director's update, and I just want to preface it with, uh, how many days have you been here?
This is my fifth day in the building.
Okay. All right.
Not counting the interview process.
Right, right, no, that's great, so Bob is brand-new and has met with all his department heads, many of the staff members, uh, and, and we're.
Yeah, so I'm going to start my director's report with a little bit about me, even though everybody at the, in this room has already met me and heard some of that during my hiring process, is largely addressed to anyone in the audience who may be curious, and then I'll continue with, uh, just a brief accounting of my time on the job so far, um, what I understand to be the immediate and upcoming priorities of maybe on my plate, and I'll follow that up with, um, what this board can expect from me, uh, with future director reports, so. I'm Bob Conrad, I was born and raised in the suburbs of Rochester, New York, on beautiful Lake Ontario and around the Quay Bay, and, uh, when I was seventeen, I went off to college in the city of Chicago, and I graduated with a radio, TV, film degree, and consequently stayed in Chicago for the next, well, not the next seventeen years, seventeen minus four, four years for college, seventeen years total. During the remainder of those seventeen years, I became a librarian, um, originally in academic libraries as a, as a paraprofessional, um, but when I went to library school and came out, the jobs that were hiring were, uh, Chicago Public Library, I got my foot in the door there, my first full-time professional librarian position, and I stayed in Chicago Public for ten years, I was a branch manager for seven of those years, and when I felt ready to advance my career further, I wound up bouncing back to, uh, Western New York, and became the library director in the city of Batavia, a small city, just about the same size as the Chappaqua School District. Um, the Richmond Memorial Library in Batavia is also a school district-type library, so I have experience with a library of about your size, and about your, serving about your population, as a school district-type public library in the state of New York, so I'm familiar with many of the ropes and handles and buttons and pulleys that we need to push, and I'm happy to be here, uh, sharing what I've learned in my last job. Um, that's probably enough about me.
Bob, can I just point out, the camera is sitting on top of the owl.
I know, oh, the owl.
Yeah.
I thought it was maybe on the speaker, oh, you're calling the speaker. I can't help but look at the screen.
It's okay, I just didn't know if you knew.
Yeah. Um, but for everyone at home, that's why I'm looking off the side. Uh, okay, so a brief accounting of my time so far, in the first week, remember, I was only here for three days, I had to take Thursday off to receive the delivery of my pod and my bed, I'd been sleeping on the floor for the first few days, or on a futon on the floor, um, and then Friday was a holiday, so in the first week, I, uh, met with all of my department heads, and with most of the staff that were available at my brunch, and together we started assessing the library's immediate needs and developing priorities for my time and attention. Uh, I did perform four hours of community outreach, um, first at a Chamber of Commerce event, and then at a Friends of the Library Board meeting, and, uh, I would say that both were an effective use of my time, but I'd like to shout out to the friends, not just because we have one here in the room today, but because I've worked with various friends groups, and you are a particularly effective governing board of a Friends body, you've got every reason to be proud of the work that you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, and it's not every job that comes with a group of friends when you move to a new city and start working there, um, library director is one that does. So let's see, what else do they do, um, oh, and that was it, I already talked about, um, taking Thursday off and the Friday holiday, another thing that I did with our board president is we reached out to our New York State Assemblymen on Election Day to, uh, wish them luck, and I reached out to the state senator the next day, because I actually wanted to press him a little harder on an issue, and that is regarding New York State bullet aid, and I could go into details if you like, or the gist of it is, I want the state senator to remember us when it is his turn to distribute his share of bullet aid, which is a discretionary line item for these state senators, um, and particularly for our parking lot resurfacing project, which likely would have qualified for a New York State construction grant, um, if I had been in this position during the time that its, its deadlines were due, so I think any reasonable state senator would, uh, would insist on helping their favorite public library in a timely way like that.
So I'm sorry, what was that deadline?
Um, I don't know for this library system what the exact deadline was, but most years I would come in on Columbus Day, because it would be due the next day, most years, in Western New York, now they did just advance that deadline, so it went from, uh, the second week of October into mid-September, so that deadline may have been mid-September this year.
Okay, so, so for our, you know, calendar going forward, you should make it a summer priority to check what the New York State construction deadlines are.
Yeah.
Should we have anything that we want to request for projects?
It, it can be difficult to juggle your projects in such a way that the balls all land, uh, that you get the cost estimates in time for the budget app, for the grant application, but you haven't started any work yet until the grant is approved, um, and especially nowadays, the, um, many contractors won't guarantee a price out more than three months, six months, because of the side of supply chain and labor problems, um, which really complicates your grant cost estimates when you apply. Okay, so that was the accounting of my time the first week, the second week, of course, today is Tuesday, um, most of the first week I had very little to no time to actually look at my emails, so I would say the entirety of Monday, and I worked some extra hours on Monday, was spent catching up on a hundred and twenty-one emails, that number includes my replies, um, to certain issues, but I did.
Interrupt you again, Bob, sorry, is the CHA director one working yet for you, or the Robert Conrad, can you?
Please use our Conrad.
Okay.
W L S mail dot org. CHA director is a very effective tool for subscribing me to things or assigning, um, login duties to, but is not the one that I would primarily prioritize, okay, or respond to. Um, but I did achieve inbox zero on Monday, so that was exciting, and then I spent the rest of yesterday and today, uh, prepping for this board meeting, and a big chunk of today, much more time than we budgeted today, reviewing payroll with Marge, and addressing a benefits question, um, for an employee that's out of medical leave. So after all that, what are these libraries' immediate and upcoming priorities? Well, we've got some key vacancies, and I'm looking at one on screen, uh, vacancies coming up to fill, we need to find a new treasurer by January, and I would refer this board and our attorney to New York statutes, section two fifty-nine, library taxes, um, as some of you may already be aware, um, a school district-type public library's default treasurer in New York State is the school district's treasurer, unless the board assigns other notice, so my question is, if you, if you're on the spot to hire a new treasurer quickly, uh, why would you assign otherwise? And I've made some inquiries, and what I've learned from the, the Westchester Library System is that, you know, it can be a matter of independence if you're not getting good service from your school district. It, it may be more effective to pay somebody to do that job, I'd say let's give our school district a chance, but I, that's also my current advice, but I would also say that it's, um, we would want to finesse the situation with the school district, they have key stakeholders, people that would have to be performing functions for us, and so whether you, as a board, decide to make those initial, um, motions to school district personnel or administration, or whether you would like me to, is a question I would like answered tonight, I'd be happy to make some calls, take some people to lunches, and, and hear what they say, of course, the fallback option is to find, um, to hire an individual accountant, not a firm, an individual accountant to take the role of treasurer. Um, a next, another immediate need is we need to find a new website administrator before January, and soon thereafter, most likely find a, a new website entirely, that'll mean find, I mean, build a new website, so the new website administrator that we choose, it would be somebody that, uh, knows what they're doing with our current or future, um, products that we would use. Uh, we can fill a part-time benefits coordinator vacancy, and that would streamline a lot of administrative processes that are falling on, uh, under yours and my assistant, Chantel, and then we have to do some quick succession planning for some key library roles, um, including some where staff have told me they are looking forward to their imminent retirement, and others where nobody's breathed a word about retirement, but, uh, I, as a librarian, would frankly have trouble filling certain roles, because I'm much more accustomed to filling, um, more traditional library roles, and this library performs several functions in this community, so, let's see, um, then some more minor tasks would be to assign staff emails to all employees and create a list serve for internal communication, and the staff needs, staff, uh, my department heads told me what their needs were, some of them include, uh, being able to have more fun at work, a little cross-team, cross-team training, cross-team building exercises, we're broken into a very, um, geographically isolated departments, and it would be nice if people had a chance to get together, work together, and, um, learn to trust each other more. So I may be asking this board for some time off, uh, some, some library closure time during our calendar year, for in-service training days, maybe even a monthly department meeting, I'm talking not about closing the library for the day, but for an hour. Um, staff needs include visible leadership, and, uh, this should make you laugh, more money, now that wasn't somebody asking for more pay, that was, uh, library staff advocating for more money for their public services and programs, and, uh, let's see, and relationship building with and within the W L X, the Westchester Library System, so our success is imminently tied to their, um, cooperation.
Um, can I just ask the question about more money for public services and programs?
You certainly can.
Okay, so define what you mean by public services.
Any of the library services that you avail yourself of are public services, so if you come in and need, uh, something notarized, I think we have one notary on staff, that's just an example, um. The, I don't want to single out any person who asked for more money for their department, but let me just say that I was surprised, considering the number and quality of public programs that this library puts on, I was surprised at how small of a budget.
Okay, so we're budgeted at twenty-two thousand nine hundred, and year-to-date, we've spent eight thousand, we're thirty-three percent into the year, so we're kind of running.
So we have the budget for it, it's not being used.
Well, it's planned in the calendar, so, you know, that's a question, you know, with your staff, what's on, on track, and we also have some, and, and maybe, um, Joe wants to talk towards that, but like, for example, you have some restricted funds, like a storytelling fund and some other things here, so maybe it's also a matter of finding it, not necessarily saying it's not budgeted, but, uh, allo, you know, allocated and how should we best schedule it.
Yeah, and some of them may be allocating it to the people that are, that utilize it better, and, uh, allocating less to the people who are not using it.
Yeah. You know, I will just say, I came to a public program that we had here, it was a library that we have on staff, Alan, and it was a music program, and there were fifty people here, um, it was, oh, it was great to see families, so, um, I think that people are dying for in-person programming, actually, and I know in the children's area, Brian and I've talked about this too, right?
They want more.
Yeah, I mean, I think the demand is there, and I'm, I'm not saying that we should not allocate more in the budget, but I am saying, let's see where it's earmarked, um, because I think if anything, this community is dying for high-quality programs, and that program with Alan and his brother, and then his sister came for the, for, on tour, she's also an opera singer, I mean, I, I addressed the audience, and I said, you know, we hear in New York City all the time, right, oh, there's singing waiters, how many places have a singing librarian? Okay, we, um, and that was just tremendous, because really it was an intergenerational group here, and it was, uh, celebrating world languages, he sang in Spanish, and you had families come on a rainy day, so.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
It gives perspective to what I was trying to advocate for. Um, I was going to leave the buildings and grounds needs to the, the deck that the committee built, it speaks for itself, but just also add, I'm not sure if it was on there, but an infrared sound listening system in, in this gallery room was requested by the program coordinator, and I could talk about some policy needs, but it sounds like you guys can just throw those into the policy.
Great, fantastic.
And the Friends Museum past program is going to take a little bit of my thought and attention as well, those are the priorities as I see them, and that concludes my library director's report, and you all have questions for me?
Fantastic.
Thank you.
It's a great report, I think, uh, we're going to talk a lot more about programming, uh, we know that we just came out of the pandemic, we had in this space a year ago, it was a children's room, so, um, we're so glad that it's back and that we have our curtains now, that we just bought these brand-new, you never have to have a fireproof, so bonus, when, when the company that is storing your curtains goes out of business, you get better curtains.
Nice.
So, um, so I think as you look at that programming budget, I would, I think there's two points, there's the one point of let's work with you to explore the budget, we never use certain funds, and there might be an opportunity to, as.
Tap into them.
Here mark that specifically for programs, you know, we'll discuss that, um, and then I also want to remind you that we have really big culture programming, so when you guys meet in the finance committee and start talking about the budget. So when you guys meet in the finance committee and start talking about the budget. This is what we've been trying to do. But I don't, I think the goal is not to gate the request, but just to make sure that the request comes out reasonable and doable. Because the demand for the programming is there. If we feel like we can deliver more, then let's do it. So that's kind of the, the, the charge. So it's a little bit different because I'm not necessarily tied to the numbers from last year. In terms of like, don't go over a percent. I don't think anyone here has any preconceived notion about what the programming budget should be. We're asking for a fresh pair of eyes to look at that, correct?
Well, the whole budget process, which I'm sure is one of the priorities, is, is going to be very important this year with so many. With yourself as the new director and so many new board members and we're a little bit behind the ball timing wise, so. Well, we're all going to have to hustle.
So I have two quick questions. One is that there is a development line here. In your administrative expenses, it's eight thousand dollars, so that's fund money for the staff building. That's what that is intended for, right? Staff development, staff development?
That's, that's, that's not fund money. Money. There is a Carol, I think the Carol Burke Fund is what they use for fund. So there is actually money allocated that the staff is only able, like it's only for them, it's not a huge sum. But that's where they typically.
It's more than enough for in-house training.
Training, right, okay.
Dana, the, the problem with the staff were trying to get me to address when I talked about. In-house, in-service training was the difficulty of sustaining public services. In an organization where most of your staff only come in to work a public service position. Or they do a combination of on-desk and off-desk duties to have just a department meeting. Much less department heads meeting or an interdepartmental meeting. That kind of, the budget was never the question when I raised in-service training.
It's, it's very challenging and we'll work through it and figure out what makes the most sense, but we did commit to the staff. Of retreat, which would mean that we're giving you implicit in that as we have to give you a day or a half a day or something to close. So our thinking, where we landed, and I don't think Dana, you weren't here yet, but where we landed on this was. That not everybody's gonna be able to come to the single training because you have part-timers that have other jobs. So we'll try to pick a day that you close that makes sense, that works in our calendar. And maybe it's a morning that you close and you do a half-day training and then you have an alternate evening. So if someone did something like that, but again, that's, that's, that was where we got to in terms of trying to suck that, what would work. And thinking about these dynamics of other jobs, hours, everything. So we're happy to support you as you explore what might fit for your staff.
Great.
I have a second point, which is, did the staff mention the masking policy in your meetings with?
None of them did.
Okay.
No. But I did say that I would tell you what to expect from the, in future board reports. And I skipped past that, so I'm gonna jump back to that. You can expect primarily written content from the professional librarians. So you'll be able to see what took up some of their time and attention. That would usually include press coverage. Of CPL as its programs and its news are in local media. And you can typically expect overview of upcoming programs and projects from this library. You can also expect some news. From, from the library and content trades. I mean, the library trade, right? Professional librarian articles. And the content trades, I just mean the book publishing industry, the film industry, the other kinds of content that we carry and circulate. It's good to keep up on those publishing and content trends. Otherwise, you may wonder why you have so many superhero movies. Well, that's, you have to get into the film trade to understand that's their bread and butter these days.
Bob, one of the things we spoke about in an earlier meeting and Brian will, will be involved with this as will our decision on treasure. Is a wish to come up with a dashboard, if you will, that will illustrate some of stats regarding utilization of our library. I think that'd be a great thing to share, not only with the board, but with the public.
So right now, the level of information is at the highest level that we reported to the state. And we're thinking that it would be nice to be able to kind of look at it in different ways. So once we figure out sort of what our backend systems can support or what we're gonna put in place to support this. The idea would be to come up with management dashboards that collectively, and maybe that would even be an output after our. Meeting to align all of ourselves.
Well, if you can trademark it or otherwise claim intellectual copyright on it and then resell it. Then this library will be well positioned for the future, just on the. The money that kind of product could make. So let's do it, let's do it. I think I'm being sarcastic, but the entirety of ILF is the Integrated Library Systems. They were developed in-house by some academic libraries and then monetized and they stopped being librarians eventually.
Yeah, no, I mean, you're, so clearly you see the value, we see the value. And if we do a good job, we'll share it with our system.
Yeah, with our system and with the state, it would go nationwide, I'm sure.
I have a last comment on the programming, Dana. One of the things that distinguished Bob with the interview process was his emphasis on innovative programming and that really struck us. A lot of the things we did somewhere around films and poetry. And so I think Boris Island is. There's a lot to come.
Well, if I only had thirty-five knees, the staff of the library would, thank you for that comment.
No, I think you'll do a great job in terms of getting to more integrated programs, which we're seeing. And I think it's also turning on the publicity in an integrated way.
Yeah.
And figuring out what is that? You know, what is the segmentation and messaging to different audiences to really get more people engaged with us? And I see the system is also doing it in terms of putting programs together that allow the public opportunities to learn about the tools. So, you know, I'm always saying, if you're not getting free ebooks from this library, you're missing out. So everybody should get a library card and be participating at least in a digital way with us. That's just my. Um, so Bob, I really appreciate your first report. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will look forward to next month's report. I'm sure we'll be needing even more, I think, with more input from the staff.
And with more documents that don't necessarily need discussion during a board meeting. Bob, with more to review, more for the public to inspect.
That's great. And along those lines, I did have one other thing I wanted to talk about, which is. We're situated in our downtown and a lot of times we talk about how, you know, we really want to support generating traffic. For the other retail partners downtown. And so I was doing a little research and I read this article about the power of ten that like, to be a successful town or to get people to congregate. You need to have like ten things going on in a space. And so I think I sort of see what the Historical Society is doing with the train show where they're trying to get those ten things going. And they're really excited and they are absolutely willing to promote us and they happen to be at the other side of town. So we have this nice, you know, this potentially this nice walk that, you know, people go to their train show and then come here or vice versa. And I'm gonna connect you to Georgia. Again, this year we're, we're running behind in terms of their publicity for things. But that doesn't mean that we can't set up train books or do whatever the librarians want to do under this roof. And that, and if we want to send a flyer up to there for them to say, hey, stop by the library. They're really open and amenable because again, this idea that the more things you do, the more density of activity, the more people you can bring in. And the more successful everyone will be. And we're seeing that with the book festival every year. They make that have, you know, they add another component of excitement to it. So, so I just want to put that on your radar to, to make sure that we're keeping track of what our other downtown partners are doing. There's also, I think Dana, you had mentioned the wine around town. Is that you?
Yeah.
The Chamber of Commerce is doing the wine around town, I think on the ninth. So obviously, we're not gonna have wine around the library, but maybe we would want to have something. Or new that, I don't know.
But get, get library cards.
Get library cards. I don't know. I, I think there are.
You can do a great juice program.
True, we could. And that's not like, it's not even a place, but you, or even like some sort of fun. I mean, we could do something and like you would be meeting a need because we have community members that abstain from drinking. And they can't participate in the rest of it, but they could come here and then go out to dinner, you know, like, so I really do think.
Or watch, there was that wine movie many years back.
Oh, remember that?
I hated it, but people love it sideways.
Yes, we'll just, we'll bring a.
We'll let all the kids step on grapes.
Right, exactly. Have they grapes, something like that.
Anyway, these are things that are cyclical, they'll come again next year. So if we can't catch them this year. You'll certainly have another chance. But I do recommend looking at the Historical Society as a model for the publicity because they really, they're in year two now. And they had almost two thousand people come to their event last year and they've really upped their game. And I, I would love to see us help them, you know, up everybody's game. I also happen to have a train table that I would happily bring down if we wanted it for the month of December or whatever. Okay, so that was, yeah, so I had met with Georgia last week, I think that was, or the week prior, I'm losing track of my time. But, you know, we had a good conversation and they're definitely amenable to doing more with us. And I did want to touch on what you said about the school district. So Howard is looking at the legal side of that for you at your request. And Andrew Lennon at the school district has had preliminary conversations indicating that, not that we can necessarily. You know. I don't know where the conversation is gonna land, but we, but we are in contact, so we're, we need to. Tomorrow, we'll, we'll set up, we'll make sure we get, get you and him connected.
Wonderful.
And he's expecting your call, so you don't even need me for that.
Okay.
Andrew Lennon. But I will, I'll pop the email, just letting you know that you'll be reading, is that one?
Sure.
All right. Any other questions for Bob?
Thanks a lot for your five days in the building.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a great five days so far.
Okay, so we're gonna go into finance. Joe, you've been waiting patiently. You wanna unmute?
You're muted, Joe.
There I go.
Gotcha.
All right. How are you and how are the books?
I, I'm well and the books are well. So, everybody's good. Okay, so I guess everyone's had a chance to look at the financials. You know, everything, you know, looks pretty much on track. You know, as, as you could see, the, we're one-third of the way through, through the year. Our receipts are at fifty-one percent of budget. That, that number's gonna grow even much higher over the next month or two. Because, you know, we get, we get our money from, from the school district, which is the bulk of, of our, of our income. And that money comes in fully within six or seven months. So, you know, just as a, you know, a, a percentage, that number's gonna be higher than. You know, than the, the rate at which we are through the year. On, on the expense side, we have about twenty, we've reached about twenty-seven percent of. Of the total expenses budgeted for the year. So, so that's a positive variance. Nothing is alarming to me. With maybe the exception of the building maintenance and repairs. You know, we're at seventy-one percent of the total budgeted amount. And I'm looking at it, there was about nine thousand dollars of tree work. And about twelve thousand dollars for work done on cleaning the pond area and, and the waterway. So, you know, unless any of those costs are gonna continue to, you know, add to that. Hopefully, we should be not too bad going forward. But overall, I think we're, we're on track.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I would agree. So the water feature out front. Should be dredged on a regular cycle and it had fallen off the radar. And it needed to be addressed immediately. It wasn't in this budget, but it got done. And we will, I, I anticipate that we'll have a surplus that it will get absorbed into. But, you know, that's hopefully, if everything works as planned. And, but that's, you should be aware of those added costs that, you know, the apple tree fall over, we had to prop it back up. You know, we probably won't have to do that for another twenty years, so. Couple of things that were on, out of, out of cycle for us.
So Joe, under payment for board grant application, since you mentioned grounds maintenance. We have Jade the Laspe for twelve thousand or, right, and then.
Yeah, that, that was, that was for the pond and the waterway.
Okay, and then on the second side of that, they're also here for four thousand two. That's the landscaping.
Well, so one is the pond, one is the stream channel and one is the front. The four thousand.
These, these are the two that we just.
The water feature right here.
Yeah, they're in the report. Yeah, the water feature and the stream bed were approximately eleven, twelve thousand.
Dave Aska's, Jen, his quote was much lower than the prior service provider, right? Correct?
Yeah.
That was great.
Yeah, so the, 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 the channel, the stream channel, which was eroded in, I believe it was Ida. Was that the, I'm mixing all my storms up, but I believe Ida worked out the stream channel. So that cost us six thousand seven hundred and fifty to clean up that, that channel on the side. To make sure that it, that it can support water in the future because it had filled with sediment. So it had gone from being a very wide channel and it's technically navigable, we think it's technically navigable waterway. Which adds to the. The, oh, you know, it's onerous to do anything there because, yeah, but we had to clean it because we were concerned that should another storm come. There was no place where we would be blocked, the, the library would be impacted at that one. So that was that one. And then the other one was. And then the other water feature. Right, so. The creek was the six, seven fifty and the water feature was the five thousand four fifty. Is that what you're, or you're referencing another number?
Looking at the financial. The back of this page, it says, back is four thousand two on the back. The twelve-two, I get. Twelve two I get, you can ask him, but the number in the back here.
Yep, so um, this number is more similar to what. What I saw on a.
Let's just agree that we're going to.
On a document, yeah, no, I think it might have come in for less than what we approved, is what I think. But we can, we can go back and look at that. Um, I don't think anyone's contesting paying that amount, though, or are we okay? We're okay, so so as far as we're concerned, we do want to look back at at the dollar amount and see, is that a partial bill? Is that the total that it kind of cheap, less expensive than what we had anticipated or? Or is that something separate? So we're not sure of that, what that.
Right, only because Joe mentioned that it's higher, so I'm gonna ask him.
Yep, no, that's that's good, um, we'll, we'll look at that, um.
I think Joe was surprised because I don't think we applied to him the fact that we were going to do this work, so it's just kind of out of the blue.
Right, well, we had two special sessions to approve both of these out of sequence. Necessary maintenance projects because of the timing to get it done because. We didn't know when the rain would come. Um, sorry, I couldn't wait for you, uh, so. So I think, Joe, thank you for that overview, it's very helpful, um. I don't think we need to make any change, we're not going to make any line item changes, everybody has um, reviewed this. So do we want to approve, we are going to approve the October twenty twenty-two statement? All in favor, or I'll make the motion, then someone else second. Brian, second thing, all in favor, I, okay, we're good on that statement, um. Capital fund, as I mentioned, I believe this is the pot pot of money that you're going to want to uh, look at for fun. Don't check that, but that Carol Burkey question, I'm pretty sure that's what that's for. And then um, our friends have a very. His a history of being very generous with the organization as well, so. Um, you know, and they're they're great at, you know, bringing the fun, so, um, so we'll figure that out. All right, so. Does anyone have any questions about the capital fund? I know we had talked about possibly earmarking. Uh, money for the parking lot, do do we want to make a motion to set aside? Uh, the money that we're going to. Um, use for the payments.
Um, should we do that in conjunction with making a motion to approve the?
Okay, so we're, so we'll, we're gonna come back to the capital fund. Um, no one has any other on on any other questions on capital fund, other than building the grounds related, okay? Um, and the November bills, we talked about um, double checking on the Jay Vasquez. Um, everything else looked fine to me. I was a little bit curious that we still have, we have one employee who. Needed a Medicare reimbursement and I wasn't sure, um, you know. If that's like the normal thing that happens or.
Yeah, I can a- address that, um, so, so. The the previous quarter, Pam Thornton was paid for only two months. Of 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 that quarter because she had only became eligible for that. In that period and, um, you know, when the. The checks were processed for the the next quarter, she was paid the same amount. And it should have been for three months, so, so that's just to make up for a short fool. From previous quarter.
Excellent, okay, thank you, that's a great explanation, um, and that is a recent retiree, so sometimes. That probably happens, but now we know what we're doing and we're all set with, that's great. All right, I don't have any other question on the bills, does anyone? Well, again, I'm sorry, I'm out of order here, we have to do the motions, then I ask you if you have discussion and then we do it, so. And I have a motion to approve the November twenty twenty-two bills. Brian's making the motion, do I have a second? Cam, a second thing, all right, so um, discussion. I'm okay with everything on here, as we've discussed, any other question, comments, okay, all in favor? I, yes, okay, uh. Right, so we're up to personnel.
May I be excused?
Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you, good night.
So, um, do you have, do you, did you, you didn't have any personnel actions in the last five days?
No, just just the appointment of your new provisional appointment of your new library director.
Excellent, excellent, so we're, we're solid there, we had, um. We got new letter templates from the cit- from uh, civil service that we're supposed to use for all of our employees. And I did forward that to the child director account, it should be in there, the templates, and I'm sure Shantel has them too, right, yeah. Um, so the only question I had is have we started using them? Um, and I know we um, we had one appoint, we had one part-time appointment last month. So that would be the first person who would get that letter that civil service has asked we we use for all the employees. Um, it happens to be a part-time appointment, so it is not quite as critical, but I think. Take a look and uh, let me know if you have any questions on that.
Thank you, I will.
Okay, uh, committee reports.
Jen, can I just ask one uh, question before we get to that?
Sure.
In here in our packet, under the Chaposa Library Statistical Reports, uh-huh, can we also track attendance per program on here?
I know we tracked it for Jamie Rastin.
Yeah, no, so program attendance doesn't show up on this, right?
So I'm confident, I'm confident that our programming director tracks it, it's just not reflected.
Right, and that is my belief. So where else would it be reflected?
It goes in the annual plan every year.
In the annual report, yeah.
The state, yes, and so we only see it as part of, currently, we only see that number. Once a year as part of that report, but this is something that. Um, we've all pointed to as an area that we need to focus on. So our programming, understanding our specifics, what we're doing.
So I'll make sure that department heads are reporting of attendance counts monthly. And it sounds like, and I'm new to this, but it sounds like we need to reflect those in the monthly statistical. Reports, that's what you're asking, right?
I just don't know if they appear somewhere else.
No, they're nowhere, nowhere else.
I don't think they do.
It'd be a great dashboard.
It is great.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what we're talking about is, that's the type of thing that when we have a dashboard, we'll take the. The New York State reporting that is currently what this is all based around. But we don't even get that piece until the New York State report and we'll figure out our new dashboard that looks at our patrons. More from like, who they are and how they interact with us as opposed to how the state wants to give us money. Because that's what this is designed to do, to very validate that we that we're providing a service to enough people that they should. That we could be part of a grant for the parking lot, for example, it doesn't help us. Figure out why our patrons are coming to events, who's coming, who's not coming. And what we could do differently, it's not detailed enough, so that's, that's where we're going to go, I think.
Yeah, it it would be a very useful uh, re- reporting element for a board that's making decisions, yeah. So ongoing program assessment, as well as attendance figures.
And and I'm I'm going to lightly suggest that we possibly. Figure out amongst our management team what that might look like. Um, maybe you recommend something to us before implementing so that we make sure that we're. Uh, that we're, we're not making busy work and then asking something different, so.
There's, there's ways to make it kind of routine and automated, hand out a card that says, you know. Please fill out our survey request, and the people that are enthusiastic program attendees, they will often tell you. Uh, they're looking for a chance to share their feedback, and people like me who never have time to fill out the survey afterwards. We don't, that's, so you won't ever get a hundred percent participation, um, but you can get something, you can get those who are willing to share.
So that's two things. But yes, we do want to survey the public more and get that feedback loop going, that's important and that's part of the strategic. Plan, so we'll be actually doing something on our list, on our longer list, um. The other piece is really figuring out what, what we're going to be asking librarians to track. For what you, you know, and maybe you don't want to know anything, but I'm assuming you want to know the same things we want to know, so that's what I'm suggesting is that. There's a level of tracking that the librarian would probably have to do. Uh, after programs in terms of filling out a sheet. Or digital.
Yeah, it's within the duty specifications of a librarian to provide ongoing assessment, so we can do that.
Awesome. All right, um, so that's, that's exciting and that's going to be really good for everybody. All right, Jen, I think we can now go into building grounds.
Sure, we've, we've touched on a lot of it, um, there's a presentation in the packet. Which really served to um, keep a record of of the various. Um, projects that have been underway and are proposed. So in terms of what's coming up, um, as mentioned, um, this board has discussed for several months. Uh, the goal of resurfacing basically the old parking lot, the south parking lot and the driveway into the library. Uh, and we have obtained a proposal for that. It's under a pre-bid situation through Boche's. Which means we don't need to obtain multiple bids, which was a real time saver as we were. Endeavoring to complete this project before winter kicked in. Timing being what it, what it is, um, we we had the final proposal, the firm is of course. Um, quite busy, um, in anticipation of winter. And temperature comes into play and as we've all seen tonight, I think it's sort of snow and sleet, um. And that may not work in our favor, so this project may get pushed to spring. The good news is the proposal as outlined in this report for one hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and seven. And dollars and a fifty cents is locked for six months. Uh, so if we approve this project and the quoted cost. Uh, we can pursue that in the spring if we're unable to achieve it. The contractor, Cassisi and Sons, will have some availability after Thanksgiving and first week in December. And there's a chance, as we all know, sometimes the weather proves mild again, so. Uh, if if there's an extended period, we need three days. Um, of warm weather for uh, forecast, then we could proceed, otherwise we're looking at April.
Um, can we do the legwork on figuring out, I know you have concerns about parking when the lot is not available. So we have to, if they actually come through with the three days and we approve this tonight, then we would need to very quickly. Think about what that looks like, because if, like, if they say we can go tomorrow. Uh, I, you know, I would like the library doors to stay open, but we probably need to verify with them, but that's possible. Um, and, um, yeah, so we will talk to the the town in terms of. Town, the town hall parking lot, uh, the train parking lot and waiving the usual permitting as well as church of the Virgin Mary.
One other thing I was thinking for our discussions today or tonight is that. If we were scheduling some staff training needed to close the library, you know. To to do the two together could be beneficial because we'd avoid a difficult parking day for the public. So we'll, we'll see what timing.
Right, if we get lucky, the public gets their parking lot faster, but with more possible hassle and, you know. But if we don't, then perhaps we plan it and coordinate the two things on the same day or days.
Sounds great, so I would make a motion to proceed with that proposal. Would you rather review the, there are three projects that I want to present. Uh, do you want us to make a motion for all three or present them individually?
No, I think we should, each one should be presented individually, but do you want to present all three? And then have us do the motions just so that everyone understands all the costs as a group before we do it.
Okay, so the second proposal is on page four of the presentation. We have a contract in place currently, uh, that began in twenty twenty-one, continues through twenty twenty-four. We had some real concerns with the vendor in in terms of the grounds maintenance. Uh, was was really falling behind, um, affecting the aesthetic of the. Library exterior as well as the courtyards, and uh, we felt we could do better. So we we went out to the marketplace, as you'll see, we solicited proposals from six different firms. Uh, obtained, uh, sufficiently complete proposals from two firms. Uh, that being as outlined in the in this chart here, ArborScape and Jay Vasquez. Uh, who we've mentioned tonight has done the the work in the water feature dredging, uh, Churchill Street. Uh, the proposals have come in essentially, um, pretty comparable. Uh, the only issue I had was the allocation of cost to year three, which I figure is a reflection of the fact that. We are looking to potentially terminate our existing contract, and so they're, they're kind of front-loading their proposals. Uh, depending on which, um, vendor we select, I would recommend that we. Have Bob or or Bill Link, our consultant, uh, return to the selected firm and. Push for, you know, more equal, um, spacing with cost across the three years. Always also beneficial from a budgeting perspective. I don't think we'll get to a full thirty, thirty-three, 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 but some something that's a little more equal. Um, one, one point about that, you'll see in the chart that the pricing is very comparable. To what we had in place for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four. The differential is that these are both very proven firms. Um, we, we did change the contract. Uh, to broaden the landscaping elements of the grounds maintenance. You know, there's grounds maintenance, which is sort of keeping everything, uh, on a stable basis. Uh, and then there's landscaping, which is really trying to improve the library aesthetic in in line with the seasons. Yeah, so Bill, Bill and I built a lot more of that into this RFP. So it will include things like planting. Children's area courtyard, um, plantings in the planters on a seasonal basis, some. Uh, pressure washing, so we we built in some additional features. The. Third proposal is what I've been charming on on page five. Uh, what I've been charming the mixed job RFP because we mix a few necessary repairs. Um, inside the library, so this includes primarily, um, the replacement of the reference area sink. Uh, apparently the hot water heater had, um, you know, just ceased to work, uh, quite some time ago. It was, was removed, they've been without a sink for a very long time. Um, and as we've talked about many times, um, in prior board meetings, the renovation of the toddler bathroom. Which was not addressed in the last renovation. Um, and as we've talked about many times, um, in prior board meetings, the renovation of the toddler bathroom, which was not addressed in the last renovation. Uh, we wanna bring it in line with the other bathroom in the children's area, uh, similar aesthetic. Um, and quality of features. So we've, like, again, we approached six different contractors. Um, had viable bids from two ago. You'll see on page five, um, Frank's contracting at twenty-four thousand one seventy-five and IQ contracting at thirty-five thousand nine hundred. Uh, also noteworthy, we are asking that both bids, um, be expanded to include the addition of a water, uh, excuse me. A water spigot in the children's courtyard, um, to properly take care of the plants in that area, et cetera. So that would be an, an equal cost addition to either, either of those proposals.
And we can't diverse un navigable waterways.
Right.
In that direction.
Right, we're surrounded by water.
Do a lot of programs with the, the kids out there, so.
So in this case, Jen, do we have to go with the low bidder? Even if the bidder says that their expect start date is ten to fourteen weeks?
So that's the concerning element about that.
Yeah.
Um, because we've, you know.
We waited for a bathroom.
Yeah, we would, you know, in the reference area that we would address this. And I, I talked to them myself and asked if, you know, some time passed since we obtained these proposals at the start of October. I wanted to see if their job load had, you know, improved at all, you know. They weren't able to promise anything better than, than what we said in the bid.
But we are required to go with the low.
No, we're not, we're not. So, um, I, I see that this.
Timing and available, I, I don't have a, I apologize, just to finish on that.
Timing and, um, availability would be part of the consideration.
Yeah.
I think it's important getting into the window, more people are gonna wanna. We're not gonna be doing outdoor stuff, but.
Sorry, Jen.
Um, no, I think that that just leaves it that since this is dated back from October and looking at the, the, that this is when these. Two, two companies were able to start, that if IQ contracting is able to start sooner rather.
And wrap up more quickly.
And wrap up more quickly, right.
The less public disruption.
And, uh, that's really all I have to add. We haven't had a significant amount of, um, additional repairs necessitated, uh, for, or addressed. Uh, for a couple of reasons. Bill Link said, you know, suffered some health issues, so he's, he's been, uh, less available to us this month unfortunately. And, and we're waiting for Bob to join us, so we'll get back underway there. So those are the three proposals I wanted to, uh, present the load.
Okay, and, um, just because I'm not, I haven't reviewed our procurement or anything. Did Bill say we could accept either there or where we? Yes, okay, and you're, you're, that's your understanding too?
I must, uh, refrain from comment because I have not yet familiarized myself.
Okay.
With your procurement.
Westchester. Okay, okay, um, okay. Uh, then we will go with the advice we've received from our consultant and, um, and we will, we will bid on these. Um, I, I personally don't have any concern about any of these jobs or the size of what we're asking to do. But does anyone here have any concern about all of this tonight? No, good, okay, so then I suggest, Jen, if you would like to make the three motions, we'll, we'll make sure you get a second. And then I'll ask if there's any conversation that we wanna have and for the, uh, for the parking lot, we will discuss the fund.
Okay, alright, so I'll begin with the resurfacing of the library's south parking lot and driveway. Uh, through Cassisi and Sons, uh, for one hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. On with the goal of, uh, beginning that project in November and in December, worst case pushing to April with this price locked in. I've also confirmed no deposit would be required if we entered the way.
Great, um, I'm going to second the motion to allow, to authorize the director to engage with, uh. Uh, Cassisi, Cassisi. So, um, I think the points of discussion are really are, if we, if we're going to approve this, how we're gonna fund it. So I think we're unanimous in terms of, uh, patrons have asked for this, this isn't some frivolous thing, we're gonna do it. Do we, um, do we in conjunct, in conjunction? With approving it, want to make any adjustment to the capital fund? So traditionally, if you have a large dollar amount of this size, you would earmark within your capital fund. You would say, I'm allocating and you'll probably allocate over the amount of the estimate in case there was a problem. I don't know if you have a, if you have some, some map that you're typically would recommend, but, um, you know. If I'd say like we go twenty percent over the estimate for our holdout, then we know that that capital can't be, we can't think about that capital for anything else. And then once the project's completed and closed out, we can return any unused portion back to our capital fund. Uh, would be my recommendation.
May I interject something there? So, um, one thing I failed to point out because I don't yet have the sufficient detail for it. But, um, apparently the contractor for resurfacing is different than the contractor for relaying the stripes, the striping. Uh, and I've been assured that that cost is under ten thousand dollars. I'm hopeful it could be under five thousand dollars, but it will be an additional cost that will be required. Unless the school district is able, I don't know if they do their own striping and then they could help us out with something like that as we get cozier with them. Well, um, so we'll, so, okay, so that's, so I think the twenty percent would allow us to cover striping and the lot. Um, so, so you recommending to use twenty?
So we're gonna, so.
Recommend.
So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion after this to, to carve out capital fund.
Okay.
So, um, so all in favor of approving the current motion that's on the table for the snow grow, for the, sorry, for the parking lot? I, it's unanimous, okay. So now, um, did you just calculate? Thank you, you're awesome, I love this brain melds. Uh, alright, so now we're gonna go back to our capital fund. And so right now, we don't have any carve out, uh. Which is good because we aren't in the middle of any major project. Uh, but I would like to, and too bad I didn't keep Joe around because I'm not sure the exact language for my motion, um. For, for this, but I'll do my best and then if you guys wanna help me. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, set aside a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Of our capital fund balance specifically for the re, it's not resurfacing, we're like redoing.
Rehabbing.
Um, it's termed resurfacing, but your, your threat is more than that. So the rehabilitation of the front parking lot. So I'm gonna need a second, I second the motion, Jen's gonna second. You guys are all clear, this isn't money that went anywhere, this is just to make sure we don't double stack.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor? I, okay, we're unanimous, that's good. Alright, so now we have a carve out for that and we will not definitely spend our money. Jen, did you wanna keep moving through the other two motions?
Yes, so second motion, um. I mean, promotion that we agree, that we terminate, which requires thirty days' notice. Our current snow removal and grounds maintenance contract. And upon the termination effective date of that contract, initiate a new contract for three years. With J Vaskas, who's already done great work for the library. Um, and I, I feel is invested in the library. Um, for one hundred thousand eight hundred dollars, I've indicated what would be variable cost. Um, driven by excessive snow, where we have to bring in trucks to remove snow, et cetera. But the base cost over three years is one hundred thousand eight hundred dollars.
I just have a question, Jen, since we're terminating with, uh. That's what we know. Uh, are we able to hold back to serve in the next thirty days?
Yes, especially they're under contract.
Okay, cuz it says that we had to have Martha go out a little bit.
Um, that makes with respect to the.
Completed related ground, okay.
The, the weed whacker, uh, popped a rock up and shattered a window in the children's area.
Mm-hmm.
And we are, um, pursuing coverage under their insurance. Uh, so, yes, we, this, the issue will be to try and resolve that, which has been outstanding now over. Off top I had over forty days, um, within this thirty day period. But Bill Link had no, because that was a concern, Liz had voiced earlier, you know, we don't wanna have snow coming, have concerns as to remove. Building had no concerns, uh, about performance under contract during that period.
Right, um, do I have a second? I'm just gonna second your motion, uh. So this again is spread over three years, it's not some, it's a regular maintenance item that would not impact our capital fund. Uh, and.
Nor our budget.
Nor our budget because.
Effectively.
Right.
With what we have.
Yes, so this is more about rates, either rate better for us.
Perfect, okay, um, any questions, comments? All in favor? I unanimous, okay. Okay, I'm good, great. Um, so the third motion would be with respect to this mixed job plus the addition of the external water spigot. Um, so the water spigot will add some additional costs and we don't yet have that tabulated. Uh, but of the two proposals, uh, my recommendation would be to work with IQ contracting, who is more expensive. But I believe will, um, require a less, uh, shorter period of disruption and be able to act on, um, these two repairs. In particular, on a more timely basis.
Mm-hmm.
And that is for a cost of thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay, I'll second that, um, I'm very familiar with these, uh, projects. And, and I think your librarians will be very grateful when we get them done, so, um, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor? Fine, yay. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you so much. We're gonna have to be ops present to staff to finally get these done.
Oh, don't tell the Riddlin Library staff that the children's room, uh, gets new bathrooms because we haven't had those ones updated since nineteen seventy-nine.
Um.
Yeah.
Um, yes, well, that is the age of this building, so we just upgraded it. Wow. Yep, no, this is great, Jen, you've been doing a really solid job on building grounds among the many things that you've been working on with us here, thank you. Um, you know, it's, it's a big building, you're gonna find that it's with the navigable highways and the things that you find out. Uh, it's an interesting property. Um, and we have bell school students that come over and do their, um, their pond study, they actually use a stream bed for science. Um, and so that's great and, uh, and we love our property, but it did have, so it did come under a lot of, um, it wasn't. Best upkeep, so thank you, you really came in and took that on. Um, and that's just wonderful to be in a better place and to know exactly how many plants are gonna get planted, so it's not, uh. Did we tell them, did we not tell them, you know, it's very, this, this new, I think the theme for us is that we're doing things smarter and. For being more explicit with people so that we can have a better outcome with all of our relationships. So Jen did a really good job of really working with Bill to define exactly what we're getting this time around. So I think despite the dollars being the same, we're gonna see a lot more. Uh, and we're gonna be very happy with, with the service we get. I, I anticipate no problem with the service, but certainly there'll be more landscaping. Um, and you'll be able to better track what's supposed to happen because you'll have a more clear outline of what they're on hope for.
Okay.
Okay, um, wow, we're up to policy, Pam, we've arrived.
So, um, so I'm excited to report that Dana and I have begun work, uh, on our, on the numerous amounts of policies that this library has. So we focused this month on trustee training, which you have in front of you. And while New York State, which, well, I'm, I'm going to start by saying that we felt it was important to put into the policy, the first paragraph. Of, of why, of the value of library trustee trainings, that it's not just coming out of somewhere, that it's. Um, that New York State, like, uh, trustees oversee an estimated one point six billion dollars of the public's money. And that the responsibility is very important. And that it really is important for library trustees, library boards to, to require some education that fosters understanding about. The dutyary responsibility as well as o- other things that go into being trustees. Um, we also felt that we wanted to include that because for people who are thinking about running for trustee positions. To understand what, what it takes to be a trustee. Um, and that it's, um, you know, it ta, it takes some learning throughout your time on the board. So while New York State has a minimum of two hours, we have decided to come up with a minimum of four hours. And feeling that most of these trainings that, that some of us have already done were like ninety minutes or two hours. And so the feeling is, oh, we just can't be done by that, you know, that there's so much more to learn. Okay, so, so we decided that four hours, that it could be delivered online or in person. And it covers a whole lectures, workshops, webinars, online courses. And that it's not, that we're not just limiting the trustee training to the, to Westchester Library System or Mid Hudson Library System. That American Library Association, as well as a lot of other libraries really have some fantastic training. So, um, and, okay, so they, sometimes there is a modest or reasonable cost in that. While when Brian is working on breaking down our, our budgets that we're going to include under board. That we're going to include like board development or, you know, that we will work with you on trying to figure out the language. But that, that it will be covered by the library, it's not something that people have to personally take care of, it will be subsidized. Um, and then, and along with it, there is a gorgeous spreadsheet of how to keep track of. Uh, uh, of the trainings as well as links to each of the trainings on top. So the trustees, all they have to do is just click on, I think we have like six trainings with links of their video recordings. And then it's somewhat of an honesty that you will, you, you will, you can fill it in yourself as the documents all been shared. Or you can certainly tell me your secretary at this, at this time, and I'm happy to fill it in. So it's somewhat of an honesty system, but we're making it as easy as we can for all of us to take advantage of the exciting learning. So then of course, with, with all of that, we do have to say that should a trustee not comply, um. The president will have to speak to the trustee and we hope that it will not become an issue. But non-compliance may be grounds for dismissal as stated by New York, you know, public, now that New York has a stated policy. Um, unfortunately, I think we do have to tag grounds for dismissal. Okay, so we can. Okay, so we can, we can, uh. Pass this tonight, I can make a motion to pass this.
So, I actually.
Oh, I did, right, I did not, I did not include this in, so we shouldn't.
So here's the thing, like, for all of our policies. With maybe the exception of the ALA, although I really think it should be standard process that it goes into the packet. We discuss it, and then we come back the next month and vote, because our bylaws work that way, and I think it. Policies weren't that sort of consideration where it sits, so that the public has a chance to say, hey, I don't like your policy, or I do. So I kinda like to let them breathe, and also for our benefit, because I think it's helpful to hear you explain it to us. And maybe we give you some feedback, once it's, once it doesn't change anymore. Uh, if it changes a minor, I don't mind voting on it next time, especially if it's our policy, but depending on the policy, sometimes it's good to. To let it have some time before we, um.
And as Dana just, just indicated to me, what I have left out is that. The sexual harassment training is mandatory.
For us as well.
For us as well.
Good, okay.
So that, that is, and that has to be clearly written, so I, so, uh.
Okay.
We shouldn't vote on this tonight.
Does the sexual harassment training go towards your four hours of training?
Yes.
It does. Even though it's mandatory and annual.
Well, it's not been mandatory for trustees, it's only been mandatory for staff. So.
Apparently, it's not mandatory for governors.
Actually, that governor does the trust, does the sexual harassment video.
Okay.
So. But yeah, so now we are making it, uh, mandatory for trustee trainings too, for trustee, for, for trustees. Okay, so moving on to remote, the remote board trustee participation and meetings.
On, okay. Um, because it could be grounds for dismissal, I don't know if then we actually should be modifying our bylaws. Probably, I don't know, I don't know how we feel about. I don't think we're gonna ever dismiss anyone based on a policy that I like.
The, the bylaws address, um, lack of attendance as grounds for.
But that's the only thing, and effective resignation. But now that New York State, I mean, it's something again for us to talk about, that because New York State has come down, that they've created. A mandate. Um, that it probably should be reflected in our bylaws in terms of compliance.
I, I feel like the, that now that it's law, putting it in the bylaws is probably. A good idea.
Okay.
Um, cause I think ultimately, this is just policy, and if we really care that much. About the training and making sure that no one sitting at this table has not done enough of it, then.
But, but I would keep it general, um, training, yeah, as required by, you know, library policy. Rather than specifying hours in the bylaws, because of course. Right, and, and then we could use similar language to that in the bylaws and the policy. You know, I, I think it's effective resignation, right? Or triggering resignation, so, rather than dismissal, because it's. Just consistent language, right, same effect.
That's excellent, thank you. So are you also thinking maybe grounds for resignation, or like, you can force someone to resign, but.
Well, we're, we were thinking, I mean, that's a, that's a great question, so then it led to another, a whole other train of thought, like. Like maybe coming up with some literature that, that says, so you're thinking about running for. Trust, library trustee. And, and just being very clear with what is expected. Whether it's, you know, the attendance at monthly board meetings. Trainings, you know, like whatever it is, and whatever. We decide has to be on, maybe, maybe we'll come up with something that we encourage board attendance at. Library programs. So, because when you're just making decisions or you're part of decision-making processes. You know, things come up, it's not, and, and, and I just think that the overall overseeing. When you're a school days library overseeing these budgets, these high numbers that taxpayers pay for. It's kinda sort of a big deal. So maybe when people come to the library to fill out the application to run. That at the same time they're handed some sort of literature, like I had said, like, oh, so you're thinking about becoming. You know, running for a trustee position.
Yeah, or, or we could maybe even do like a little video or something, because. I, like, every year we send a different trustee to, uh, the, the legal woman voter. Very, they're great, every year for the election, they host, uh, Q and A. And we send a board member to talk about what we do. Um, but it's always someone different, and so it's always a little bit of a different take on what we do, so it would be. Really cool if we, um, if we did wanna create something that, that basically we could even just play. As, or, you know, point to as the definitive, this is what the Chaplain Library Trustees do. And this is what we don't do, you know, so we can make it very clear. Um, you know.
How great would it be to like work with, you know, with some high school students on making this? You know, filming it and engaging with them.
Be good, um, for someone in a government class to learn about how we govern in Newcastle, so maybe we can, uh. And there.
Any librarian WLS would be able to watch that if it was posted to YouTube. Um, you would want this to not just be a handout that we give to those who seek the petition, but a brochure. That's available all year round and a page on the website.
Yes.
If you're a video, that's, you know, you, you link to that on YouTube or wherever it's meant to go via there. And, you know, whatever is our video. Site of choice, keep the thirty seconds you can put it on TikTok.
Well, you know, that's so funny, because this is what happens when we, we start talking about policies, we start talking about. You know, other, other things, additional things.
Yeah, no, but that's definitely, I mean, I think Bob, what our board definitely is working on. Our assets too, and how we organize, and we didn't touch on it tonight, but we're still trying to get ourselves. More out of email and into documents, Jen's done a great job for building grounds. Um, taking that discussion and making sure it's always in that document, and so we're gonna try to keep doing that because. Um, one, we're busy and we can't spend all day sifting through emails, it's getting unwieldy for us, we're not getting each other's. Messages, but we also know that that tends to spiral into your world, and you have it in box managed, so. Um, we're trying on our part to do some, some, you know, to coordinate some shifts in our, in our working relationship. So you're, you're living it with us, and we move towards a better, better managing our own assets and stuff. So that's just part of our growing pains.
Great, okay, so, okay, so moving on to remote board trustee. That the policy. Is, again, working within the Westchester Library System and the American Library Association, that. Trustees are expected and strongly encouraged to be physically present at all in-person regular meetings. So having said that, that in order for trustees to be at meetings, this is not special meetings, this is not committee meetings. This is board meetings only, as stated in here, that. We need at least a quorum of three people in person, so even if you're attending on video. You can vote, but you're not counted in quorum, we need real, real people in person, quorum. Okay, so that, that, um, is something, and. Again, Bob, you, you know, you are, we need your eyes on all of these policies, so in fairness. You know, take all the time that you need to review and, and to, you know, come back. With any thoughts?
Okay, I'll come back to the policy committee.
Okay.
With thoughts.
Okay, thank you, so there, there have been two, uh, two policies that were actually. Yeah, two policies that were brought up at previous board meetings that for Dana and I to work on, which were. The facilities usage policy, okay, which we decided that we cannot work on that without. Bob, and so. We spoke with, we spoke with Bob before the meeting, and that we will, we will come together to work on that. As well as the patron conduct. Okay.
You brought that up, because I was.
Oh, were you? So that actually has come up, because that came up with. I can be, that came up attached to. That came up to, yeah, I, I apologize, but that came up in, in a previous board meeting attached to a previous.
Okay.
Idea, and then there's also, you had mentioned about social media policy. Which in, while we, even before we had Martha, Liz and I worked on. An interim social media policy that I will send right over to you for you to look at, and we were waiting for you to sign off, to arrive. And then to bless it. Okay, good, so.
Yeah, so familiarizing myself with your current policies and, um. Where they need to be revised or updated is among my, uh, priorities for the first month.
Oh, yeah, great.
You made it, you made it on the list. And I'll just give an example, because it did come up with, um, staff incidents. Uh, your rules of conduct, they allow the library director or their designate. To suspend patrons from the library facility and its privileges. And one of my duties as a director is to tell you that boards love to appoint the director with those abilities. But that, uh, the courts have routinely found access to your public library to be a First Amendment right. And that boards may not abdicate that responsibility to, um, the library director or staff. So only a judge or a library board can suspend a patron from the library premises or privileges. So some portion of board meetings will necessarily become. Uh, the director's report on, on requests for suspension.
Hold on, hold on, back up.
Okay, I was just giving that as one example of a current policy that I would advise.
Say that this library does everything in its power to keep. Everybody that wants to be here in these. No, I mean, that is full stop, our goal is for everybody to feel welcome here, full stop.
Why are you saying that as if that wasn't ever even the case, it seems like.
Because I, I think at our first meeting, we don't wanna be saying, hey, we got a problem that we're. Um, I don't think it'll, I don't think it's the best foot forward to say that. That Bob might bring us people that need to be kicked out of our library, because in my tenure here, we have never, ever. Had something escalate to where we had to intervene. And I do know, and, and I think, um, we're gonna assert some policy time, and I'm sorry, this meeting is going a little bit longer than I would have liked for everybody, but. It's important, so, right now, the community is, um. And so for all our patrons, they should all feel comfortable, and they should all know that the librarians are gonna work with them to keep them here. But for our patrons that can't follow our rules, which are very generous. Then we have, then we have to do something, and typically, when we think about what group that might be. There's one group that gets targeted for all the problems, and it's always the teens, so we'll, we'll just put it out there that teens. Tend to be the one source where they test us on our ability to keep these buildings totally open. Um, and I think, uh, you know, the library was tested again this week, and we should probably talk offline about the details of that. But, um, I think, a- a- as a community right now, there is a heightened focus on teens. And there are some teams that appear to possibly be in crisis and causing negative in our community. Um, I don't know if those are the same teams that are in our, in the library or not, um, but we, we are. Well, I, I mean, it's, it's the kids that went and basically the cops had to go to Franny's, and, and basically there's been repeat. That, that, there's been, basically it's candy shop, and they're taking advantage, and they're doing things that they shouldn't, you know, certain individuals are making. All teens look bad, and if we had our teen librarian here, she would tell us about all the nice teens that are not causing problems at all. Because there's way more of those, but everybody always, you know, it's easy to, but at any rate. Uh, if you look at Chaplain Moms, in twenty fifteen, we were complaining about teens, in twenty eighteen, we were complaining about teens. And in twenty twenty-two, we're complaining about teens, meanwhile, in twenty twenty-two, the parents. Who, you know, their teens are now in the high school, but they were the twenty fifteen or the twenty eighteen teens. Those people forget that their teens also did things, so, um. I am, I, I don't want all our teens to get a bad rap, I do know there are issues, and I don't wanna minimize what the library, the struggle. The struggle is real, but the end goal doesn't change, we want, we want the teens here, so we're gonna. Try to make sure that everybody that comes here has something to do that's productive. Um, and that's our goal, and if we have to change our policy, we will, but. Um, we'll take that back to our excellent attorneys and see how they feel about that.
Yeah, I was only bringing up that, uh. It's not a legally enforceable.
Right.
Uh, policy.
Yeah.
So, i- if you want a policy that is legally enforceable, that's one example of where I would recommend certain changes.
Awesome, and we will take all of that feedback, it's very valuable, and we, and I, and I totally, I like, I'm a hundred percent. Grateful that policies has, has, is also on your plate, because I do appreciate that. Um, I like to say Bob's probably wearing a lot of caps right now, okay, and we want to change that out for a crown. Um, so that's my little analogy, uh, and it's based on caps for sale and all those crown books. Max, but anyways. Um, um, you know, I have to try to have my life very fun as part of this. All right, I'm gonna, uh. I think we are, for policy, do you feel like you have what you need, you're gonna have a policy committee meeting with Bob? On committees in general, I know when. We walked in, we, we kinda, you were saying you weren't, we still have to figure out policies. Um, so typically, sorry, committees, uh, we have to figure out committees, so typically what we do is the, the president is authorized to. Start a committee or terminate a committee, um, and then the president will usually select the trustee committee members. Um, that they usually select themselves, and, and then, um, and then we come to you and we say. We have a committee, you know, there will, usually you know about the committee board being reformed, but then the idea is that you select who on your staff has been with. Um, and more expertise or who's.
Right.
Yeah, so that's kind of, we don't, we allow that, that's totally at your discretion, who you want to work. Closest with us on these carved out things.
Okay.
And we're not, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we work with the schedule, so we're not, we're trying to schedule. And I would like us to try to schedule committee meetings, I think yours are not standard, um, if we can get everybody's committee meetings. On a calendar that works for Bob, then he can figure out who might, how it might make sense to staff that. Um, and also, for the board, um. Bob doesn't necessarily know the staff as well as we do, so if you have thoughts about who you would. Think would be good for something, um, I think at this point you're still, uh, green enough that you might. Uh, appreciate some of that, eventually, I wouldn't even try to offer who I think, because you'll know it better than us.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, so, um, one, one, one last thing I was going to, um, uh, with my role on the safety committee. There's, uh, training that I saw that looked particularly interesting, that addressed, uh, safety and security and included.
Uh, training that I saw that looked particularly interesting that addressed, um, safety and security and included. Um, you know, some of the good things for them. Um, that we've discussed, you know, that, that could weigh in some of these policies, so fantastic. If I can. Get that signed up pretty quickly, I'll report that. Okay, great, great.
And Brian, your committee, I didn't put you on the agenda because I know we're, we're still getting going, but I know you have a calendar, you know what you need to get done. So I would just ask that you schedule the meetings and let us know as quickly as possible. If we are gonna have, we, I think we're gonna need the budget work sessions, so we would need to know, so we can carve out time. And ideally, if you guys decide all that this week. Um, then we can spend next week figuring out availability and getting our, you know, blocking in the times. Um, because then that will give us enough time to comfortably make public notice for everything and schedule, so that's kind of why I wanted you to lay out the whole. Map, because that, that just gives us more time to not be up against the clock, because just to reiterate for the board. When we want a special meeting, we need four days' notice to the public on a special meeting. Um, the only meeting that we can have instantaneous is an emergency and. We really shouldn't, we hope we don't have emergencies, so that's, that's the rub, is that if we all agree on. Friday that we're free on Monday, that doesn't help, because it's not enough days. I just want to make that clear, because I know we, the calendar has been. Right, those, so I'm saying that I, I, within a week, I want to know what you got, what you need for availability, so that. We can get this all squared away quickly, because we need Bob's schedule, our schedules, um. Yeah, so that's, that's the, uh, that's the most like, the thing that didn't make it in here yet. So next month, we'll definitely have our plan and that was great. All right, so, um, well, you don't have communication committee, but I'm gonna just quickly hand it out. I know we're late, but, uh. One thing I had drafted as a result of our retreat, were calendars. We have one calendar posted on the website, Bob. See, there's some drafts, uh, the first one just says board, I put at the bottom, other things that have to kind of come on this. State control report, budget announcement, okay? Also, I have on here committee sessions and work session, so I, you know. Take a minute, this is, this beautiful thing is Jen's, it's all color-coded and what she really has done, okay? Let's just, let's just give her the gold star, the crown, or whatever we want to do now, but she has all of her meetings on there. I mean, I think this is a great model, it's on an Excel spreadsheet. The next one is Brian's, for the budget. Would he propose for the finance committee? I know, I'm sorry, my printer, okay. This one I have annual calendar, staff and director, and then I have the public events one. Um, just pulling in different things that we have in different places. So, uh, again, I'm on the committee, we don't have anybody on it yet, Bob, that's the next thing we'll figure out. Um, but, but I think that just putting us all on literally the same page would help. Yeah, this is, this is, thank you, Dana, this is great, and, and one of the first things. That I think will be helpful out of communications aside from like this, like having one unified calendar, but then looking at what the. What the communications that go along this calendar look like for our patrons.
Right, we didn't even get it to newsletter or email or anything else, or mailers, but.
Right, yeah, so.
To come, yeah.
Yeah, I think we, we want to get to that picture of what the experience looks like for. A couple of different patron types, because then we can start to work with that, um. All right, this is great. Do you, how do you want us to give you feedback on this or?
Yeah, I, it was emailed already, so I, I can do it again. No, I, I can email it again.
Okay. Um, so you want to feedback.
We can just give you the feedback if we have it, right?
Okay.
Digitally or orally, however.
Yeah, these are just drafts, we'll see what, what makes sense, what works. I love Jen. It's a matter of inputting, you know, for them.
Right, no, this is very helpful, and I, I think I really appreciate that we're also, um. I think I have a hypothesis that a lot of the departments have their own versions of these things, that we're not necessarily on a central version. Um, but I don't know, so I don't know if this is like this Harvard Heritage Month's. It, does everybody follow the same holiday kind of calendar or? So I don't know if this is helpful or redundant to what already exists. In terms of how our librarians plan their, their year.
We'll find out.
Yeah. All right, excellent. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna, um. Call the meeting to, we have public comments. I forgot about our public comments. We moved them to the end and then almost skipped them. I'm so sorry. Um, is there anybody at this time in the public who would like to comment? You can use the raise hand feature. And we will elevate you and you'll just need to give us your name, address, and, uh, you'll have three minutes max. I'm looking and I do not see any hands raised. Okay. All right, so with that, thank you very much, everybody. Um, it is nine o'clock and I would like to call the. November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting to a close at nine P M. All in favor?
Or please second to.
Second, ten seconds at all in favor, I rooted in this. Excellent. Okay, thank you, everybody. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks for being there, attending.
Thank you.